Okay, I have seven o'clock. The invocation this evening will be given by Father John Sterling. Welcome.
Thank you Tyson. Let us pray. We stand before you all loving God, conscious of our sinfulness, but aware that we gather in your name. Come to us and remain with us, enlighten our minds. Give us light and strength to know your will, to make it our own, and to live it in our lives. Guide us tonight by your wisdom, support us by your power, for you are God, sharing the glory of Father and Son. We know that you desire justice for all. Enable us to uphold the rights of others. Do not allow us to be misled by ignorance or corrupted by fear or favor. Unite us to yourself in the bond of love and keep us faithful to all that is true. As we gather in your name, may we temper justice with love so that all our decisions may be pleasing to you and earn the reward promised to good and faithful servants. For you live and reign with the Father and the Son, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, and I'll call the July 7th, 2015 Regular Council Meeting to order. I ask that we all rise to pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Mrs. Hoffman, can we take roll call?
Mr. Meyer.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Sudkamp. Ms. Pitts.
Here.
Ms. Kyle.
Here.
Ms. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Skidmore.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. You've received a copy of the minutes from the June 2nd, 2015 Regular Council Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Motion by Mr. Meyer, second by Ms. Kyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of this week, of this month's agenda. I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Ms. Kyle. All in favor, oh, excuse me. Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, so we move on to our special presentations. We've got the business spotlight. We'll have Mr. Blankenship, if you want to introduce.
Thank you, yes. We've been wanting to have some spotlight of our businesses here, and we have tonight here from Sterling Cut Glass. Sterling Cut Glass has been a member of the Earlanger community since 1987 and recently constructed a 56,000 square foot office and warehouse on Olympic Boulevard. We've got Brook Dias from the business here to speak to us about it.
I'd like to thank the council, Mr. Mayor, and the residents of Earlanger for allowing me to talk for a few minutes. I did promise Mr. Hahn I would try to keep it brief because the history of a 113-year-old company, it can get long. But I'd like to start just by introducing myself. My name is Jay Brook Dias. I am a third-generation owner of Sterling Cut Glass. I am partners in the business with my father, Mike Dias. I am a 1996 Covenant Catholic High School graduate and a 2001 University of Kentucky graduate. I've actually worked at the company since I was, I've earned paychecks, paid tax on paychecks, since I was 15 years old. And really, it was a blessing to have grown up in the business, have worked every job at the business. Some more fun than others, but truly a blessing. As I mentioned, Sterling Cut Glass was founded in 1902 in Cincinnati, Ohio. It was founded on the top of Mount Adams. There are some famous pictures throughout the city if you ever go down to the train display at the Natural History Museum during the holidays. We actually have a very nice marquee showing Sterling Cut Glass up on that hill back in the early 1900s. My grandfather, who was the first dius to work at the business, he grew up in Critten in Kentucky, the son of a farmer. And during the Depression, you know, the family needed money, so he moved, so his family moved to Covington. And my grandfather quit school at 14 and went to work as an apprentice glass cutter at the old line firm in Mount Adams. You know, back then, everything was done on the cutting wheel, so you can picture lathes and cutting wheels. And of course, it was a very skilled, you know, it was a skilled craft. He left for World War II, he volunteered, he was an older soldier, so they gave him kind of a cushy job. He was in the Signal Corps stationed in England. And he would say it was the greatest four years of his life because he received three square meals a day and he was afforded an opportunity to play golf once or twice a week. When he came home, he married his sweetheart, my grandmother Ruth, and he went back to work at Sterling as a master cutter at that time. Well, in 1949, the owner of the business passed away, of Sterling Cut Glass, he passed away. And his family didn't have any interest in continuing the shop and continuing the business. Well, my grandfather was the only one who showed up at the auction. So he bought the equipment, he bought the goodwill, and he maintained that building in Mount Adams for about a year and a half or two years. Well, here, the business had fallen on hard times. If you weren't making boots or bullets or guns at that time, you know, your product wasn't in a real big demand. So he moved the business to his garage in Covington, where he operated it until 1962 when he was able to lease a dirt floor factory space on McMillan Street in Cincinnati. In 1970, my father graduated from graduate school and he began working at the company. That's about the time that we got into what most people probably know Sterling for in the Cincinnati area, and that's for being in the retail business. We've had retail stores, locations on Grandin Road, and that's in the Madisonville area, in downtown, in Kenwood. We've actually had them in Atlanta, in Lexington. And we actually had one, I say it was about my early childhood time, over in Edgewood. And so, about 1980, we moved the factory from McMillan Street to the Daylight Savings Building. That's the one that's coming right out of the Lidl Tunnel, and that was a big move for us. That was a lot more space. And it allowed the business to grow. At about that time, we got into some other markets, which I'll touch on here in a minute. In 1987, my father constructed a building on Gapway, which was the very beginning of the Circleport development. That was Mr. Butler and Corporex owned all that land, and right at the beginning, he was one of the first buildings back there. And 19, or say in 2000, in about 1999, we moved to the corner of Mineola Pike and the exit ramp. So if you ever came off that exit ramp, you would have seen us up there as well. That building was larger, it allowed us to grow into that building as well. I joined the company in 2001, full-time, after graduating from UK. I started a new sales division, and it was basically an opportunity to earn my keep. So that's what I did, and basically, that's what our family is kind of founded on. You know, we go to work, we roll up our sleeves. My current role is overseeing the day-to-day activities of the company. My father is 68 years old, he is near retirement. And, you know, he's earned the right to continue to work as much as he wants, but I get to do most of the heavy lifting. We decided last year, probably about this time, that we were going to move and that we wanted to construct a new building. So we worked again with Mr. Butler, Corporex, and we bought six acres on Olympic Boulevard in Earlanger, Kentucky. So that's right off of Turf Light on Olympic Boulevard. Nyer, you know, Al Nyer Incorporated, they constructed the building. We broke ground mid-August and we completed, it was a pretty fast build, and we completed it at the end of February of this year. So that is a 56,000 square foot building. It has 11,000 square foot of office, and the rest of it is a production facility. It is state-of-the-art. We, you know, it's not all completely done. I mean, the building's done and we're operating in it, but it is a state-of-the-art building designed to maximize, you know, and really be very efficient. So these days, you know, even in our old building, we had a lot of segmented offices, you know, everybody kind of hidden offices. Here, we have a very big, nice, open office design. It encourages collaboration among all of our departments. We've also been able to double our production capacity in our warehouse, really by only increasing the size of our building by about 6,000 square feet. And that's basically just because we were able to engineer the building from the ground up, really maximizing our space. We are currently producing about 4,000 etched pieces of glassware a day. We produce it for, you know, numerous corporations across the country. We produce for almost all of the Bourbon Trail companies down in Kentucky. And our biggest market would be the golf business. So if you've ever been to an event, if you've ever been to, you know, any of the majors, say the US Open, the PGA Championship, the Masters, or if you've ever been to the Memorial up in Columbus. But we are the PGA licensee for our product type, so whether that's trophies and awards that would be presented to the winners or it would be the glassware that is being sold out of the shop at the event. So that has been a great business for us. This year was my father's 30th year attending the PGA Trade Show, which takes place every January. It's a great time of year to be in Orlando. I'd encourage any golf enthusiast, give me a call, I'll get you a ticket, and, not a plane ticket, but a ticket to the show. But that is a, you know, so really, it's a very, you know, it's a backbone of our business. It's a neat business to be in. I like to play golf. Before I started a family, I was much better at golf, but the, you know, it's a very rewarding business. There's a lot of loyalty among the customers, and also, you are producing and selling a product that is so well-received that you just get so many compliments on that it really makes you feel good. I always joke that if my family business was, nothing against plumbers, my wife's family actually owns a plumbing company, but if that was my family business, I probably wouldn't have gotten into it. But the fact that we produce a product that is, that has such a nice perceived value, is so well-received, you know, it was really a nice, you know, I really, you know, gravitated towards the company. You know, currently, we do not have a retail location in Cincinnati. We actually closed that September 30th of 2014. It's the first time in my father's 40-year career that we do not have a retail location. When I say retail location, a brick-and-mortar store. And, you know, I mean, businesses evolve. You know, in the dawn of the internet, the increase in competition, you know, is, you know, up in the Kenwood area. And really, our business model has changed to where, you know, the construction of the new facility, walking away from the brick-and-mortar retail, really became, you know, having a ramped-up presence on the web is our future. Well, it's our present too, but it's definitely the future of the business. We are, as I mentioned, we are PGA licensees. We're licensed either the LPGA Tour. If you watch the, you know, the event up in Whistling Straits next month, you'll see that's all the glassware, any of the, you know, stuff they show is ours. In our corporate markets, we're an A-plus rated supplier, we're a five-star supplier to advertising specialty business, which is focuses on corporate awards and gifts. We sell through a distributor network and national trophy shops. The trophy shop that's out in Wilder is a customer of ours, just for, you know, just as an example. If you do want to buy our monogramware, this isn't a plug, but you can go online. That is still available. And if you ever shop from a company like Frontgate, all Frontgate's monogramming ware would be ours as well, so we would supply them. But just in conclusion, you know, it's, I mean, we had a lot of choices on where to build our building. You know, we have employees that have been with us for numbers of years. We've had employees move from Ohio to Indiana, move to Kentucky, move to the Earlanger area to be closer to work. Didn't want to abandon them. I felt that if we moved across the river, besides truly the quality of life as a Kentucky resident, they have to cross that bridge every day, that it just wasn't fair. That we felt we were enough part of the, you know, the community that we needed to stay here, that it was important to us. And so, you know, working with Mr. Butler, working with Al Nyer, working with the city, we were able to come across a very nice, very beautiful piece of property over on Olympic Boulevard. We have deer, turkey, 30-pound turtles. We have wildlife everywhere. It's really a pretty place for a guy who likes wildlife. And we're just thrilled to be here, thrilled to say, thrilled to be in Earlanger. We have a beautiful building, we have great neighbors, and we have a lot of local support. So just want to thank everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Brooke. It's a pleasure getting to know you. Next up on the agenda is our police officer recognition. Chief Wilson.
Hello. My part of this is going to be very brief tonight. Several years ago, we started, under then-Chief Fields, a fitness program to better enhance our officer safety, slow down on injuries, and hopefully to provide our people with an outlet for the stress that they endure on a day-to-day basis, as well as try and reinforce that there's life after law enforcement. So we've expanded on this program year after year. I think it's been in effect for about five years. And it's changed. And this year, we started a new tier program. It goes in three tiers. And Officer Ailer is going to expand on that, and then we're going to introduce the gentleman that performed at the top of that level.
We just wanted to cover a little bit about our program and how it started. As Chief Wilson said, we started looking at the life expectancy of a police officer versus the average citizen in the public. And the average life expectancy right now for everyone is about 82. And when you look at the life expectancy of a police officer, that's 67. They relate that to stress, your sleep patterns, the diet you have, the high different times, and then just the driving around in the car, being sedentary. So we looked at the health concerns that we were having, we looked at some of the use of forces and different things, and we established the fitness program under Chief Fields, like he said at the time, and in conjunction with Chief Aaron's. Couple of things that we looked at, we looked at what do we want to do and how do we want to increase the health and wellness of each of our officers. So the first year, what we did is we began with organized, structured workout programs for every officer. We would get them in, in a group setting, we'd do an organized, structured workout. And each year, we would take what was called a POPS test. Through the state of Kentucky, they have what's called a POPS testing that you have to do to get into the academy and that you have to do to exit the academy. After that, in law enforcement, you're no longer required to take any type of physical fitness test. So Earlanger, being ahead of the curve the way we always are, took it upon ourselves to challenge our officers to try to get them better, healthy officers. So as Chief Wilson said, it's not about just doing the job, it's about life after the job. It's not just getting them to retirement, but getting them past retirement and to enjoy what they've worked for, for their entire career. So our first goal was to get people to take the POPS test. So it became a mandatory participation. That was our first level. At that time, the standard evaluation guidelines were rewritten to, based on their performance, that reflected upon their evaluation. And we tried to come up with some other. For some, the POPS test was challenging. For others, it was less challenging. So we looked at, how do you motivate people? And the first thing people think of is money. You dangle that carrot in front of them. Money's not a long-term motivating source, nor is it, when you average it out, the time that you're putting into the workouts, money's not always a good motivator. So we looked at two other motivators. We looked at intrinsic motivation, what comes from inside, which is the pride of how you look in your uniform, your ability to do your job, and we focused on that. And then we began to look at the health consequences. Everyone knows how the health costs continue to go up and up and up. So we looked at that, the consequences that you're going to face down the road if you're not healthy. It's going to cost you more money, it's going to cost the city more money, and insurance is not going to get cheaper as we go on. So those were the two we focused on. Like the chief said, this year, we tiered it out, and we kept trying to come up with ways that we could motivate people further than the POPS. So our first motivation was passing the POPS test. And for passing the POPS test, you receive a shirt, the fitness shirts that you'll see that several of the officers have on tonight. That is tier one. So we said, how do we get people past that? What's our next challenge? Well, last year, two years ago, we made a challenge board. So each of those categories that they take in the POPS test has three places, and that was the ultimate. Up there is, you win one of those categories to try to motivate people. In between there, we established, Cooper Institute in Dallas, Texas establishes health and wellness and fitness standards for the government, for corporations across the country, and that's the national standard. So we started to look at those and compared those to our POP standards. POP standards are fairly low when you look at them on the Cooper standards. Cooper standards are very tough. So we, in the evaluation guidelines under Chief Fields and his administration, wrote those, if you achieved an excellent rating, of an average of excellent rating, then you had accomplished tier number two. And that was our second tier, our second reward that we focused on. This year, we had more officers pass the POPS test than we have ever had in the history of our department. We had 30 officers that passed the POP standards. These are the exit standards that people need to get out of the academy. So that was quite, quite an accomplishment, just to have that. We had seven officers who accomplished an average rating of excellent or better on the National Cooper Standards, which was, again, was quite an accomplishment. And then we have six categories on our challenge board, and obviously, we had six winners that produced some numbers that we had never seen in our department. Over the past four or five years, as we did this program, we've watched it evolve from officers who would go out there and they would really struggle with passing the POPS test. They would really struggle with some health issues, and we've seen a lot of benefits from our program. One of the things we've seen, we've seen officers that have lost close to 50 pounds. We've seen officers that have had double-digit body fat losses. We've had officers who were diagnosed with diabetes and given medication by a doctor and based on working out a couple days a week on structured programs are no longer on diabetes medication. So we look at those. We have people who have high blood pressure. We brought that down. Some of the other things that we've looked at that have continued to evolve as this program evolved, working out's not for everybody. So it's a carrot that you really have to dangle in front of the people. But when we started looking at the health risk and the health concerns, a lot of people's eyes were really opened. They've really bought into this program. As we reduce our health costs, we lower in our risk of injury, we also reduce workers' comp. We also reduce uses of force. If an officer is better prepared, better fit, he can go out here and do his job using less force, which to the city and the city forefathers equals reduced liability. So we're saving dollars in workers' comp, we're saving dollars in liability, and we're also saving dollars in health costs. So our program has really evolved and came a long way. And we just wanted to recognize a few of the officers tonight who have achieved these standards. We had, like I said, 30 that passed the POPS. These seven here, I think there's seven, about seven there, most of them have achieved the excellent rating in the POP standard. So we wanted to reward them with something. We didn't want it to be police-related. Everything we do seems to be police-related. So what we did was we bought them backpacks or gear bags that they can carry their workout clothes back and forth to the gym in. For accomplishing the ultimate goal of one of those categories, we bought what was called a Fitbit. This monitors their health, monitors their sleep, it's a fitness, the new fitness cage, I guess if you would, that people wear on their wrist. It tracks their daily activities, tracks their heart rate, and it's something that they can use it as fitness-related. So as we continue to watch this program grow, we see nothing but benefits. We see officers who are starting to buy into it, we see shifts that work out together. They've built camaraderie with one another, and they've setting the goal or setting the foundation for a healthier lifestyle for the rest of their lives, and hopefully, once they retire. Do you want to recognize everyone individually? Sergeant Jason Whaley, he was a Cooper Average of Excellent winner. Tom Los. Tom Los actually was the only person on the department that had an average rating of superior, which is the highest category possible, so quite an accomplishment. Justin Autton, he also was a, he had the average rating. He was a two-place winner on the board, I believe. Tom Los was also a winner in the setups. TJ Selby, Sergeant TJ Selby, excuse me. He was a winner on the board first for the glory of bench press. Sergeant John Sterling, average rating of excellent. Aaron McNeil, who was also a winner. It was actually a tie for the bench press between those two individuals. Again, the other officers were either on shift or unable to attend. Thank you.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
About a couple weeks ago, when these gentlemen were working out, if you want to see something, go out and watch what they do because I was impressed, very proud that you guys are our police department because it's amazing what you guys are doing out there in that heat. Keep up the good work. I thought it was awesome.
Excellent. Hey, did you have something?
Yes, I had a question. You know, it seems like Earlanger is always on the cutting edge of everything that we do, and I just wanted to know if there have been any other police departments that have contacted Earlanger's department to ask if they can get on board or how to get one started in their area or anything like that yet?
We have talked to other agencies. What we find is when we travel around in training and we start talking to other agencies, they look at our program and they want to know, well, how do you do it? How do you do this program? How did you start it? One of the big questions that comes up in trainings when some of the administration goes, there's three things where police officers get killed: driving, fighting, and shooting. And the main focus, everyone shoots at the range. They're required to go to the range once or twice a year. Driving, some of them hit that, some of them don't. It's amazing when they ask the question, what agencies actually do something for your physical fitness of your officers or defensive tactics? And we're probably one of the only ones in the room, I think, at Barron River a couple of years ago. As some of the administration said, they were very proud when that question was asked, and they're the only ones that can raise their hand. We have talked to other agencies that do have some type of fitness program. I don't know that any of them have the structured fitness program we do. Several of them have workout programs, workout incentives where they pay for gym memberships, or they have, I know, a reward where they earn so many dollars a year for working out. But I think we're, again, ahead of the curve because we're taking pride in our officers and not only looking at what can we do for our city, but what can we do for them and their health concerns.
Good job.
Thank you. Great job. Thanks for making us proud. All right, next up on the agenda, we have service award presentation. Chief Whitaker.
Tonight, I'm here, we are here to recognize a 25-year service award recipient, Rick Bowle. And as I try to think about each individual as they get an award or promotion or whatever it is, I'm reminded of the story, and this will be short, I promise. Years ago, being a young guy in Covington, and we were watching some gentlemen retire that had been on the job quite a while. And, you know, we were kind of discussing, that guy was really good, that was a good guy, that guy, good luck, good riddance. And we kind of went through the, you know, just sitting around talking, and there's another gentleman and myself were doing the talking. And Pat Anakin was an English major, this buddy of mine, who was on the fire department. He always had a very good way of putting things. And, you know, I was like, oh, that's a good guy, really like him. I remember Pat saying to me specifically, he said, you know, that, he's a man with a good soul. And I never heard him say it because I hadn't heard that term, but really a [BLEEP] one. And so as I was thinking of the individual tonight, when I try to think of a compliment, I can't really think of a better compliment than for anyone. He is a Lloyd High School graduate, so he's homegrown, class of 1988. So I threw that out there so everybody can do the math and figure out what he really is. 1990 to 2001, he was a volunteer firefighter EMT. He was a member of the Erlanger Rescue Squad, and Patty is not here. Do you still have the jumpsuit? Does it fit? Patty still fits, and she's not here. 1995, he became a full-time telecommunicator with the city. 1997, he became a full-time police officer. And 2006, he returned to the full-time telecommunicator position. And in 2008, he came over to the fire department as a full-time firefighter EMT. Six years later, in 2014, he was promoted to a lieutenant position, and he currently serves as the president of the Erlanger Professional Firefighters Association. Know his parents here tonight. See his sister Donna was here somewhere. I know Susan, his wife, Chloe and Ethan, his children. He is a resident of Edgewood. And although this is not a sterling-cut glass pen, I am very happy and proud to recognize Rick Bowle for 25 years of service.
Sure. Yeah. Well, since he read my resume, I don't have a whole lot to say. I'll take it back. I did want to, when sharing some of the email saying I was going to be recognized as this man, I started to think about what I was going to say. And most people come up here and they say, thank you, thank you, thank you, and, you know, same way, thank you, thank you, thank you. But I started to think about more than that, that the understanding that goes with 25 years. I've been through, you know, it's been a joke, I've department hopped, loved every department I've been in, police, fire, EMS, dispatch. But with all four departments, and I don't think people realize this enough, that the sacrifices and the understanding, and that's what I wanted to talk about briefly, is the understanding, not just the understanding I have, but the people that are around me. And the understanding my parents and sister had at three o'clock in the morning when I was a volunteer, when the pager would go off, and I'd get up, I'd come running up the firehouse, and get on the ambulance or get on the fire truck, never really paying attention to at that time, I'm waking them up. They have jobs, they have responsibilities, and at three o'clock in the morning, I'm waking them up so I can leave. My wife, my kids, the understanding in family as well, the holidays, the birthdays we miss. So thank you all for the understanding. That means a lot to me. Thank you for everything that you've done, everybody here, there are people that sit up here that have that understanding, that I've been there with at three o'clock in the morning, and I appreciate that. So thank you to everybody. Enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item is the mayor's report. I don't have too much to report, but I did want to say I received in the mail from the Government Finance Officers Association, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the City of Erlanger. Just want to show that to you real quick. Thank you, Greg, there. And then also, while speaking of that, on the same lines, we also received from the same organization, the Government Finance Officers Association, Award of Financial Reporting Achievement to Greg Engelmann. Greg, come up and get these. Thank you so much.
Good job, Greg. You heard them. I've been taking the watch or something.
You let Steve know that you've set the bar pretty high. We expect the same of Steve. All right. Also, let's see. At this time, too, I guess I'd like to go ahead and get the approval of council for, to pay two invoices here for Wickman and Associates. And also, the same date invoice, number 17979, and the amount of $5,470 to be paid. Motion, okay? Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, so moving on then. Reports of committees, public safety. Ms. Cowl?
Yes, I have no report, but Chief Wilson is in the house.
All right. Then next is public safety, fire, EMS. This is Skidmore, Mr. Meyer.
Yeah, just a, just a quick summary. There was 257 responses for an average of nine per day in the month of June with eight fires and eight non-fire events, and then 171 EMS dispatches.
Wow. Good one. Wow. And I have a thank you note to read, and this was sent to Chief Whitaker from Miles Elementary. The teacher was Jess Hall, and it was on their field day, I believe it was the last day of school. The teacher writes, "Thank you for being a shining example of what it means to be a community. We can work tirelessly in the classroom, but seeing heroes in action makes all the difference. Thanks for all you do for my kiddos. They love seeing you on field day." And the kids signed a thank you note. I'm going to read their first names if I can make them out. Some of them are kind of hard with today's, with today's names and stuff, but these kids wrote their name on here, so I'm going to do my best to read them. Hannah, Emma, Sakari, Sierra, Kylie, Carmen, Kyra, Sydney, Peyton, Ashley, Carson, Rosie, Backston, Angie, Kayden, Mason, Elijah, Mason with a Y, Cooper, Maya, Carly, Eli, Jax, Tristan. What do you think?
I don't know. Aaron.
Aaron, Austin, Ashton, Jocelyn, Paul, Jason, Natalie, Kyra, and Quentin. And if I missed anybody, I'm sorry, or if I pronounced it wrong, I'm sorry for that too. So, let's give them all a big hand in case they actually watch it.
Thank you, Renee.
And the chief is in the house.
Happy day.
All right, thank you, chief. Next up, we've got Public Works, Mr. Cahill, Mr. Skidmore.
Yes, I'd like to thank Public Works for Touch a Truck. They had a good turnout for the rain, and Mr. Bogart's in the house.
Coming back from South Carolina, I should, feel I should give you all a big hey y'all. So I hope the Wickmans enjoyed themselves as much as I did down on my part of the Palmetto State. To reiterate what Mr. Skidmore said, just want to give the team kudos. I know they showed me some pictures of the monsoon that they worked in getting everything picked up after Touch a Truck. So have had a lot going on this past two months. We've been short with some medical leave and vacations, so everybody's really been chipping in and getting a lot done, so we certainly appreciate that. Wanted to touch on four quick things. One is the caboose. Wanted to let you guys know that we've been in touch with Progress Rail, working to get that moved to their location down off De Corsi Pike. That is going to be a monumental undertaking to get it craned and trailered out to the location. That's going to cost us, transportation cost out and back, we're looking between $16,000 to $18,000. They are going to donate all of the material, labor, and costs associated with the restoration while it is out on site. We are doing a comparison with what it would cost to do it in place with a group that we met with last Thursday about a train display, which is American Eagle Railroad Group. And I can tell you from our initial conversations last Thursday, going with Progress Rail, the route that we've got lined up is certainly going to, we're going to come out ahead with. Okay, so that's going to be a pretty, pretty big task that's moving along. Did send out an email about the Dixie Highway paving project, so wanted to make sure you guys had gotten that email. That's going to start, Eaton Asphalt was awarded that project by the State Transportation Cabinet. That's going to target to start the first week of August. Mr. Vioxx and myself and Ed Melkin were at that meeting. It is going to run on Dixie from Hallam Avenue all the way down to Euingle Boulevard, so it's going to be a pretty extensive project. Mr. Vioxx did mention to them some extensive repairs that they'll need to work on and look at down at the underpass. So we're going to have a lot of work going on. The majority of that work's going to go on at night, so we're going to communicate with the businesses out and then get it out on Facebook and everything. Our dump truck that was budgeted for in fiscal year 15 was delivered last week. We hope to have it at the meeting next month so you guys can see it. We did come in with that on state budget and had some savings as we were able to get a 2015 model year chassis. And then the last thing, we've got the Donaldson Beautification Phase Three underway right now. So you see a lot of work going on out at the Pork Chop Island, some safety medians going in, and you will see out at the wall, out at the front, that we did get some lettering installed, so that was a big improvement when you come into the city. So we're working on the landscaping and the lighting. So, so I hope I haven't talked as long as Chief Whitaker normally does, so I'll sit down.
Did I? Okay. Any questions?
Just part of the report, too, we have bids tonight we'll be discussing for Division Lambda Enterprise Drive. And also, warning to the folks that live along Boone Links, we will be, the Public Works Annual Golf Outing is this Friday, so please cover your all glass and things like that that may be struck by an errant ball.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. Next up, we've got administration, Mr. Howard, Ms. Cahill.
Yes, yes, mayor. We do have four pieces of information on our legislative agenda. We think that there's ordinances to be read tonight in regards to personal policy changes and also for the key performance indicators, is that right?
No, there's no, there's no ordinance for that one.
Okay. Okay, so, and there will be no, and there will be no action taken, we decided that there will be no action taken on the tax amnesty program and no action taken on the KLC prayer ordinance, so. Also, I want everybody to know that anybody on, anybody in council or that is interested in attending the KLC Conference Expo, please see Ms. Andrus. The conference this year is in Owensburg, Kentucky, from September 29th through October 2nd. Hotel reservations need to be made by September 15th for us to receive the conference rates, so.
I have the up and coming events for the Parks and Recreation for July. On July 9th, this Thursday, Concert in the Park is at Flagship Park. It's from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. The music is by Crush. Chicago Don Hot Dogs will be there selling hot dogs. Kona Ice will be there selling Kona Ice, and there will be giveaways from Cash Express and Cornhole Games. Then the next Thursday, July 16th, at the Depot Park, Cincinnati Circus will be there from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Erlanger Elsmere Schools will be serving meals, and the Bridges Program will be giving away 100 free bicycle helmets. And on the 23rd, also a Thursday, is Family Swim Night at Silver Lake Recreation from 6:30 to 9:00. You need to come to the city building and get a ticket to attend and show that you are an Erlanger resident, and all Erlanger residents can go free, but you do need your ticket and you need to come to the Erlanger City Building to get the ticket to attend. And that's all employees, too, whether you live in Erlanger or not in Erlanger, you're also invited to attend, but just check in and make sure they know who's going. And then the last Thursday in July is Stargazing Party. It's at the Flagship Park also. It's 9:00 PM to 10:30 PM. Chicago Don will be there to provide refreshments, that's at a cost, and then you'll be able to look at the, I think Jupiter was the one specifically that they were going to show, that you use the telescopes and everything for, so you can come for that. So, and I attended most of the June events, and they were excellent. It was really great. The fishing, at the fishing derby at Flagship Park was probably one of the best attended, not only with the children that come, but parents. It's the first time I've seen that many parents come, and that was amazing. The Touch a Truck, awesome, awesome job by everybody, especially Public Works, putting up those tents and taking it down. It was a monsoon. It was a monsoon. It was. And transportation provided to our cars by Dale was amazing. God bless Dale. Right? And then the Honey Hill Farm at Rainbow, and Putt Putt Night, too. Everybody had a great time there. And the August schedule is out, too, on the webpage, so you can check that out for August, too.
All right. Ms. Andrus is in the house? All right, thank you. End of report. Wonderful, thank you. All right, next up, we have economic development and finance. Mr. Blankenship, Ms. Pitts?
On June 30th, the fiscal year 2015 books were successfully closed, and they were rolled over to fiscal year 2016. The staff is now in the process of completing the closing process for fiscal year 2015 and preparing the records for the annual audit. And the initial month of training for Steve Bodie and Shannon McCauley has gone well. They are both learning and getting more comfortable with their new duties. That's all. Greg? Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next is the codes, building, and zoning. Mr. Dunhoff?
Okay, as you all know, we had Smith Telling come and put a presentation on what they wanted to do out, out there at CorpEx area, about putting up the garage and everything. Well, Dave Hahn had met with CorpEx, we had told Smith Telling they had to go back to CorpEx and find out how they felt about what they wanted to do. Well, CorpEx met with them, told them what they thought. Dave Hahn got together with them, so now Smith Telling is coming back to us. On the 21st, we're going to have a committee meeting. They're going to report back to us, and we'll make a decision what we're going to do then.
Is CorpEx invited? Is CorpEx invited to the meeting?
CorpEx will be here also, yes.
All right.
And that's all we have, and Dave's not here. He's recuperating from knee surgery.
Okay, wonderful. All right, next up is progress in revitalization. Ms. Pitts, Mr. Cahill?
Yes, we will actually be having a first reading of the latest revision of the nuisance ordinance. So we'd like to thank our great citizens for all their help with that, and I think we've come to a fair compromise. Thank you, Ms. Pitts.
Mr. Howard has one thing to...
I have been talking with, some neighbors have approached me and had some issues about the, about the recreational vehicles that we parked in there because there's a resident in our, in our area where recreational vehicle, we parked recreational vehicle, but there's no resident living into that, in that area. And we want to try and get that language clarified to where maybe the person, there has, there has to be an occupancy in the residential area itself, in that area, so. And I talked to Mr. Gatlin about it, and I think Keith can help me out here a little bit.
Yeah, so for clarification, currently, all we, the current ordinance that is proposed for first reading tonight, all we are doing as it relates to the storage of recreational vehicles, boats, and trailers is removing the four-month restriction. So what you are proposing and what you are discussing is a little bit broader amendment to that ordinance where you are only wanting people to be able to park recreational vehicle, boat, or trailers on occupied properties, correct? Okay. And again, that's not in the current ordinance. That's certainly something that we can include in this, but as I discussed with you, I don't think it was anything council has previously contemplated.
So close. No, but now, is this something that we could read with that, have the first reading still with that as an amendment, or do we need to amend it first before we have the first reading?
No, I've got no problem plugging it in if everyone's comfortable with that.
So it would just be a matter of taking out anywhere, the word anywhere, and saying that would be on occupied property.
Right, nobody's...
That's right.
Because we, all I want is just make sure there's somebody living in the residence that's got their storage there rather than...
Yeah. So the way I would amend it would be the parking of any recreational vehicle, boat, or trailer on... boat, or trailer on occupied residential property.
Sounds like it hits it to me. Any other discussion on that?
So, we will include that language in the first reading tonight, and then when you guys see the second reading, it will have the proper language tied into the ordinance. So, that's, that's an Arnoldus Chapman save right there, Mayor.
You think so?
I think so, I think you saved it tonight.
All right.
Pretty good for a...
For a newbie? Thank you.
I was gonna say from a builder, but...
Was there anything else there, Tom? Okay. And Ms. Hopkins in the house? Anything for the report? All right, thank you. All right, you've heard the reports of our committees. Do I entertain a motion that they be adopted as presented? Motion by Ms. Kyle, second by Mr. Howard. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, reports of representatives. Are there any reports from our representatives this evening, Ms. Kyle?
Yes, I just wanna remind people, for the Historical Society, we're talking about refurbishing our caboose. Just wanna remind you that on August the 8th, the Historical Society is going to sponsor a yard sale from 8:00 AM till 2:00 PM, and if you would like to sell something at the yard sale, you can rent a space for $20 and you provide your own table, but then you keep the proceeds from your sales, okay? So, you keep the profits. The other thing you can also do that I think would be well appreciated would be if you would donate an item for the yard sale to Historical Society, and they would have someone there to receive any donated items from Tuesday and Thursday from noon to 4:00, and then Saturday from noon to 5:00. So, if you have anything that's, you know, in good condition that you would like to donate, they would, they would really appreciate that, 'cause like you said, you know, it's gonna cost us pretty much money. And then also, a reminder, on September 20th, we have Heritage Days, so we would like for everybody to come out and join us for that celebration, maybe volunteer to work, they're always looking for volunteers. So, I just wanted to remind everybody that those are two upcoming things, that the Historical Society would really appreciate your participation. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Just for clarification, Vicki, you said Tuesday to Thursday, or Tuesday and Thursday from noon to 4:00 is when they'll be there to accept, so would that be August?
Yes.
August 4th and 6th?
I think that would probably be any Tuesday and Thursday.
Oh, okay.
I think they're open all the time, so...
Oh, okay, I gotcha.
Yeah, there's a lady there, I forget her name, but she would be there to receive anything that you wanted to, any Tuesday or Thursday.
Wonderful, okay, thank you. All right, are there any other?
Yes, Senator, Erlanger Housing, Mr. Hahn wanted me to report that he'll be calling some kind of meeting together with the committee, Mr. Blankenship, myself, and Mr. Vioxx, Mr. Fields, yourself, and talk about how we wanna go out, about how we wanna go about restructuring Erlanger Housing, what our, what we wanna do.
All right.
We're gonna revamp that up and hopefully, probably next month.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other? Yes?
Kent County Alliance, I'm meeting with Lisa Anglin later on this week, and Kevin Burke made the suggestion that we put the prescription card on the website, and Sherri and Missy actually worked together, I think with KLC and got that job done. So, I'm gonna see, and I know it was really, really difficult, so I'm gonna see if Lisa can't put a link on just to the city of Erlanger, and then when it gets to the city of Erlanger, they can go in and find the RX card for themselves. Does that sound like a...
Yeah, it sounds great.
So, I had on that.
All right. So, would that, to get that online, is that something that you would do, Sherri?
Yeah, I can work with that.
Okay, good. All right, any other reports? All right, then, moving on, we've got the report of, the reports of city operations. Mr. Vioxx?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bogart alluded to our meeting with the Highway Department relative to the resurfacing repairs to Dixie Highway. He pointed out that we had some discussion, or I had some discussion with them about the conditions of the road, and to be more specific, I pointed out to them that I didn't want them to resurface Dixie Highway and expect the same holes to pop up two years from now because he didn't fix them. And I mean, I'm aware of the extensive amount of work that needed to be done at the underpass, and I told them there was gonna be a major issue there managing the traffic when they did it, so they indicated they would probably try to do that at nighttime, but still directing traffic to one side of the underpass in both directions is a problem. They're aware of that, and they're looking into it. I told them I thought there was some collapsed storm sewer possibilities in that area, so they're looking into that, and then I warned them that they could expect to see me if I saw any black new curbs or black pavers on our section we just got doing, doing along the sidewalk on Erlanger side. And so, they made their contractor aware that he could expect a visit. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vioxx. Mr. Gatlin?
Mayor, other than the traditional legal services to the city, something a little bit more unusual is Mr. Wickman and I met with American Legal today to discuss some of the discrepancies that have, are kind of originated over time in the Erlanger Code of Ordinances, and I'll kind of defer to Mr. Wickman, who I think wants to report on that.
Thanks, yeah, we have, we met with a representative of American Legal this afternoon, and I think everybody's agreed that there is some concerns about the, the methodology involved in the, in the codification. We need to address that, and I think we need to have a committee meeting to do that.
So, that'd be on the 21st?
Yes.
Anything further?
Nothing from me.
Either attorneys? Mr. Wickman, anything else?
Everything that I was gonna report on has already been covered, Mayor. As indicated, I've given the monthly report to the members of the City Council, I'll be glad to answer any questions in regard to that report.
All right. Mr. Fields?
Yes, sir. Couple things, you're gonna see a new ordinance tonight for first reading on there, it's the termination ordinance. This is one of the ordinances that we've been talking about since January, I believe, even before January, even before the new administration took over. We've been talking and discussing about ways to change that and do it. This is the version that we've come up with. Everybody that I have talked to so far is in agreement, including myself, and what it states. It simplifies things, it does, in fact, give everybody here that's an employee of the city due process hearing for termination. It clearly defines what those violations are in it and how that hearing and who would hold that hearing. We are in support of that as a staff and as an administration, so, you know, we encourage the first reading of that ordinance tonight. I know Mr. Blankenship has reviewed it, and he can make any comments that he would like to make about whatever.
I've looked it over, I think it looks good. It gives everybody the protections we want, sets forth a very clear procedure, so I think it's a good ordinance.
The only other thing, I wanna mention something about what the Police Department's presentation was tonight. And I know it's very difficult, and we all get into these things, but, you know, talk about POPS. What is POPS? And nobody ever said what POPS is, and I don't know if everybody's here on council knew what that was. We get into that lingo sometimes and we don't realize everybody doesn't know. But several years ago, I believe it was 1997 or 1998, the state of Kentucky adopted police officer professional standards. That's what POPS is. So, police officer professional standards, sounds a little bit better than POPS, I think, but that's what those are. Along with that, there were, there were academic and educational standards, and also there were, were physical fitness standards that went along with that. Like, I can tell you, you know, the question was asked by someone, I don't know who it was here, but someone asked the question about other departments doing this. I can tell you, the percentage that just passed this POPS test, I would put up against anybody in the country, not only this state, but this country, and the number of officers that we had passed that test this year. That's unprecedented, that, that, that has occurred. Missy can report on the lower interest rates, the Safety Committee does a very good job of following all of those things and looking at it. You know, we, we got a, what was the refund that came in just, just recently, were several thousands of dollars, that 14,000, something like that, that our rates have been reduced because of that and what our rating is. You know, this is where, you know, this fitness program, everybody talks about wellness programs, and all you read about them throughout, throughout industry, no matter where it is, you know, there's pros and cons, you know, there, is there a cost benefit, you know, to it, you know, what is it? I can tell you that, you know, we, our intention is to hopefully, you know, try to get, you know, and we do have some, and we started some classes to do citywide. We have a lot of people citywide that are participating in it, and other departments. Very, very good program, so if you, you know, ever are interested in doing it, I'll tell you that, you know, Greg Eller, who presented tonight, Tom Los, they are instructors in that, they will help us do anything at any point in time and put those things on. We've partnered with a couple businesses in town, move our bodies up the street to do it, some yoga, so, I mean, there's some things that, that people are doing citywide that we're gonna see a huge benefit from. Rick's people in Public Works, you know, the injuries that just from lifting and doing some things like that, you know, they've all been reduced because of what his guys do in the morning. If you go down there at 7:00 o'clock in the morning, you'll see, I don't go down there much at 7:00, I'm not claiming that I do. I'm not that early bird, but, but, you know, you see his guys, what they're doing before they even start working in the morning, they're exercising, they're walking, you know, they're, they're stretching, they're getting all those things done, and, and the Safety Committee is gonna be doing a bigger report on those kind of things later on to talk about the reductions that we've had. Phenomenal year we had last year as far as worker comp claims and the lost amount of time we had, it was, it was phenomenally low. It was a very, very good year, and we're hoping to, to build on that, and it comes from just that, that wellness program. So, there is a lot of value to it, and we're seeing that. Being able to put it all together is, is one thing, but, you know, thank you, Chief Wilson, for, for doing that, and everybody that belongs to that whole, whole wellness thing, 'cause it's, it's a really good, really good program. That's all I have, sir.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, just touching on that same thing, the EMR, the employer modification ratio, isn't that what that is? It was .96, and it went down to .88 in one year, and we have that with our business, and to have that kind of jump, I've never heard of that kind of jump in one year, it's really fantastic. All right, you've heard the reports of our representatives in city operations. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Motion by Ms. Skidmore, second by Ms. Kyle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, correspondence, Ms. Hoffman?
There is none, sir.
All right. So, now we come to the time of the meeting for our citizens and public comment. We've got one person on our list here, Ms. Corget Nordlow.
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if you could just comment on the eyesore that is along Stevenson Road? Where we stand with that? It's been ongoing and ongoing, so I would like to hear and have, be on public record what might be going on to resolve that problem.
All right, there, there's probably other people that can report on this better with more detail, but I can let you know that, and stop me if I'm starting to give too much personal information, I don't know how much of this I'm allowed to say publicly or not, but the, the property there, as you may or may not be aware, the, the deed holders of the property were a mother and father that had both passed away, and the people who are living in the property are the children. For a while, I think our, our notices were going to the deed holders who had passed away, who are deceased, and those, those letters were either getting ignored or weren't getting to the, the people living there. So, now, you know, with visiting the property directly, they have been fined a substantial amount of money. From what I understand, the, the property is now going into foreclosure, and the city is pursuing the foreclosure on the property. Mr. Wickman?
That's great to hear.
Probably looking at a timeframe, ma'am, of at least a couple more months, 'cause it's in the court's hands right now, just to see what we can do, but we, we have done everything that the mayor has said.
That's great, 'cause so many people comment on that, and it's...
Right.
... a huge problem for the image of our city, so...
Yeah.
Thanks for...
One more thing that we're doing is, we haven't sent it out yet, but we've, we've just been working on preparing a letter for the neighbors that are adjoining there, just to let them know what's going on. I think getting the word out to them as well is gonna help that word spread throughout the community, and really, more than anything, help to give them some hope. It's gotta be horrible...
Has to be.
... living with someone like that next door, unfortunately.
It's good to see forward progress.
All right, thank you. All right, are there any other citizens that would like to comment this evening? All right, then, with that, we'll move on to our bids.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vioxx?
We took bids, reported, well, actually, all the bids were reported on the committee meeting night. We actually took the bids on June the 9th, almost a month ago, for three projects. We read the results of those bids, so the Public Works Committee has reviewed them and their recommendation to me, and for me to report was, we'll award the projects to JPS. It turns out they'll be the contractor on all three projects. The first one is Lambda Drive Concrete Street Replacement. It's JPS Construction, the amount of $84,951. I think we need to take action on these separately.
All right.
Got a motion, I think.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, excuse me. Motion by Mr. Cahill, second by Ms. Pitts. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Second project was the concrete street replacement on Division Street, and this is the street where we had to wait till the Water District replaced the water main, which is now completed. The low bidder, again, was JPS Construction Company, and it's the Public Works Committees and my recommendation that we award the work to JPS Construction, the amount of $212,071.50.
All right, we've got a motion by Mr. Burke, second by Mr. Blankenship. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And the third project is a storm sewer improvement along with concrete street replacement on Enterprise Drive, which is one of our industrial streets, and American Court, another industrial street in the same area. The low bidder was JPS Construction. Public Works Committee and myself are recommending that we award the work to JPS Construction in the amount of $294,359.20.
All right, can we get a motion by Mr. Cahill, second by Mr. Burke? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And we have a pre-construction meeting already set up with the contractor for Thursday. All we have, sir.
All right, Mrs. Hoffman, Mr. Vioxx, are there any, any other bids tonight?
No, sir.
No, sir.
All right, then we'll move on to old business. Does anyone have unfinished business to report? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Does anyone have any new business to report? Ms. Skidmore?
It's not really new business, but Kenton County Government Academy is open for applications, and that program is in January, and it runs for either 12 or 13 weeks, and they feed you, okay? Anybody that really likes food, they feed you pretty good. And it takes you to all the, it takes you to the Kenton County, like, dog, um... Shelter. Yeah, thank you, shelter. Takes you, you actually get to listen in on, you visit the courts, we visited, well, we visited 13, Fiscal Court Judicial Branch, thank you, Planning and Development Services, School Districts, Health, we had principal from one of the Covington schools come down and talk to us, local fire and police departments, we had both of those, they were very interesting. And Water Districts, sanitation, and actually even went to the airport, actually got to ride the bus up on, it's called a ramp, it's where the airplanes actually take off, so that was kind of interesting, too. I've got one application, we can make copies if anybody out here needs one, and it's free.
All right, great, thank you. Any other new business? Ms. Pitts?
I didn't know if this, if the public was made aware, but, and I don't have the details, but you guys might, about Asco, his accomplishment, our police dog. you guys might, about Asco, his accomplishment, our police dog.
Oh, yeah. What was the comment? Our canine unit?
Our canine. I just think people should know how awesome he is.
There was some national competition, or there's a statewide competition, where 28 canine teams competed. They're national standards, and you're gonna ask me this acronym, and I can't remember exactly the initials, the NAPLWA, but it's the National American Working Dogs Association, da-da-da, whatever it is, yeah, it's something like that. There were 28 teams that competed in the state of Kentucky. Proud to say that Asco and... Pretty amazing, since they've only been a team for a year. I think during the first year, so. He's really not as vicious as he looks.
He's a mean bark.
He scared me with his bark tonight.
Yeah, well, but...
Any other new business?
Yes.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Okay, this could have been under old business, too, but as you all know, people keep asking me about the Erlanger Lions Carnival. We didn't have one last year, and we're not gonna have one this year. However, myself, my wife, and the first vice president, Alan Stevens, met with the new ride company in Cincinnati, Ohio. Kissel Company's coming back, they do, next year, we'll be doing the Erlanger Lions Carnival on Memorial Day weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So it will be back, it will be a lower scale of what we used to do, we're gonna kind of cut back and make it more family-oriented like we used to. Lions Club will be going back doing the kitchen, and like I said, Kissel Brothers will be back for the ride. Yes. Fish ride? We'll be doing the fish, yeah. And there'll be a ride bracelet every night, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so, and then just want to let everybody know, we'll be back.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's a great weekend, because that's our parade and all.
Yep.
All right. Wonderful, thank you. Any other new business?
Hang it down.
All right, seeing none, we'll move on to legislation. We've got, let's see, will this be you, Mr. Gatlin?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
First, the infamous nuisance ordinance. First reading, an ordinance to the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending the Erlanger Code of Ordinances, Section 106.03, and ordinance 2361, to remove recreational vehicles, boats, and trailers, and driveways as a nuisance, and to modify the restrictions on storage of waste containers, and an ordinance amending the Erlanger Code of Ordinances, Section 5102, and ordinance 2326, deleting provisions regarding the storage of waste containers. As has previously been discussed, this ordinance will modify the parking of recreational vehicles that will allow them year-round on occupied residential property. As it relates to the storage of waste containers, it changes the time to 4:00, and then requires people to move them back to the, within two feet of their premises or garage with the goal of hiding them from view as much as practical. It does repeal any other ordinances that were conflicting as it related to, there were a couple ordinances that discussed side yards, front yards, this cleans that all up.
All right. I ask that the assistant city clerk please note in the minutes, the first reading of this ordinance. Our next ordinance?
Next ordinance is an ordinance to the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, protecting the tenure and terms of employment of all full-time employees and non-elected officers of the city, other than the members of the police and fire departments, and repeal of prior ordinances regarding the discussion of non-elected officials. This has nothing to do with police and fire, because those have very specific statutory requirements, KRS 15 and KRS 95. What this ordinance does is it restricts the mayor's ability to terminate people at will, at-will termination ability. It creates a progressive system of discipline for inadequate job performance, as well as requires a due process hearing for any terminations or suspensions of pay.
All right, again, we'll please note that we've had the first reading of this ordinance. And then third, we've got a municipal order.
This is a municipal order of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, amending the city Erlanger personnel policies as stated in the municipal order. The sections of the personnel policies that have been amended are COE 2.7 all the way through COE 6.6, and upon the adoption of this municipal order, the personnel policy shall be amended with all of those attached amendments.
All right, do I entertain a motion to adopt that?
Motion.
Mr. Dunhoff, second. Mr. Burke? Third by Ms. Pitts. Sorry. Just the first, just the first one, sorry. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, with that, then, we move to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Blankenship, second by Ms. Pitts. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.